Good evening. I want to welcome all of you to our Tuesday, June 21 meeting. And thank you all for coming. We have a good crowd tonight. That means people are interested in what's going on in Burke County government. And we thank you all for coming tonight. If you would silence your cell phones and any other devices. And with that, we'll -- Mike Thompson, the senior pastor at Faith Presbyterian Church, is going to give the invocation. And after that, Girl Scout troop 2023 with April Buchanan heading that will give the pledge. Would you all stand for the invocation? And is the minister here?
I don't see him.
Did the minister?
He was confirmed.
Hmm?
He was confirmed.
Well, we'll go to our second plan, Maynard. Will you do the invocation? Will you pray with me, please?
Father, we're so thankful for this day. Father, for the privilege to be alive. Father, for our health, for our strength. Father, we do pray for our crops and our gardens and our lawns that you send us some rain. Father, we pray that you bless this meeting as we make decisions on the behalf of the citizen of Burke County. Father, may we be justice, may we be fair, and Father, may we do the things that would be pleasing and in your sight. Father, and after that, we pray that you give us a good trip home and a good, healthy week before asking thy holy name. Amen.
Amen. If the Girl Scouts would please come up here, and the flag is over to the side here. Girls, the flag is behind you all. It's up there. There you go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the three bodies for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Girls, stay right there. We're going to take a picture with you. But let's give them a big round of applause. Didn't help my hearing. All right, our next item of business, item number four, is approval of the meeting minutes. We have March 1st minutes, pre-agenda, March 15th, special meeting, March 15th, regular meeting, 21st, special meeting, and 28th, special meeting. And if there's no problem, I'd be happy to entertain a motion to pass all the minutes in one vote.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve all five agendas as submitted.
Good, thank you, Maynard. You've all heard the motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Pose like sign. That passes five to zero. Thank you very much, Maynard. The next item, item five, is approval of the agenda as amended. We have some supplemental information there. Presentation number one, there's a PowerPoint slide, scheduled public hearing, number one, budget ordinance, consent item number five, draft contract and consent number six, project ordinance, revised items, consent item number four, new motion, decision item number one, motion to rescind, new item, decision item number six, GMP for senior center library project and supplemental information contracting. With that, I'll be happy to accept a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Mr. Chairman, before we approve that agenda, a question on those revised items. Would it not be due procedure to move those into a decision? Does everybody know why they were revised?
Well...
Wouldn't that be in due order? Not that I'm concerned, I just...
Supplemental information is most of that.
Yeah. Yeah. Just really information for... Again, I'll be happy to accept a motion to approve it as printed.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Jeff, all those in favor of the agenda as it printed, please raise your right hand. Pose like sign. That passes five to zero. All right, our first item under item six is a presentation. We're privileged to have the chairman of BDI here, Alan Wood, to give us an update on -- a quarterly update on what's going on in economic development in Burke County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners, Madam Clerk, and county attorney. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this afternoon. I guess we're into evening now. I'll start with -- go ahead and proceeding to our second slide. This is a snapshot of our plan of work for this past year. It's hard to believe I've been here for 15 months already. Time flies for certain. These were developed after my first 90 days in the position with assistance from our board of directors and several other community leaders and from the committee of 100. We set four main tasks, which were working with existing industry, workforce development, recruiting new business, and looking how we could work with small and growable businesses. I'll start with our existing industry. This slide is a representation of, and not all of, the existing industry folks that we have made contact with in my first 12 months on the job. It's a pretty impressive list, and there are a lot of really good companies in there, and I have enjoyed getting to know each and every one of them a great deal. That totaled 75 existing industry calls in a little over 12 months. Our goal was 50, so we far exceeded that. And we had planned to continue that pace as time goes on, and especially as opportunities will present themselves. On workforce development issue, this is on everyone's mind everywhere in the country. I have not found a single locale that can say that they have all of the trained workers and all the skill sets that they need. In working with our partners, what we have come up with is a concept that we need to have a fundamental shift in the way that our young people and parents think about the jobs that are available in Burke County and the opportunities that present themselves. In so doing, we're working with Community College, with North Carolina Works, with the school system, with our business in the industry. And we are bringing in an outside public relations firm to help us determine exactly what this is going to look like and to make sure that we have the deliverables to these students and their parents so they can make an informed decision on what their education will look like in the future. And why is this so important? Because right now and in the next five years, every job in this country, of all the jobs, 70% of them or more are going to require some type of advanced training. And we are falling behind the curve on that. We don't have 70, 75% of our kids right now that are availing themselves of these opportunities. We've got to find some way to turn that around. This is a long-term proposition. It will be a process, and it's one that we will start, and we will continue to tweak as time goes on, hopefully, and we'll see results. And those results will be with raising our capacity and having more trained workers coming through our system at whatever level they choose to be. On our recruitment side, we have, through the past 12 months, have made 16 outside visits outside of our community, including my staff and I. Some of these are events with our local economic developers, but many of them are with consultants who actually carry projects and are making the decisions on where new companies are going to go. You'll see here, we've had 16 marketing trips, 46 meetings with our business recruiters from the state, and 12, at least 12 separate meetings with site consultants who carry projects. These are the decision makers, and we have to be face-to-face with these guys, which means that we are going where they are, and we will continue to do so. For the 1617 year, we continue to plan to have a very aggressive schedule. This is just a partial list. It can be adapted, and I will say that I am including my staff in this. I am not taking all of these on my own because I think it's important for them to explore what these opportunities are and to be able to expand their reach and grasp and not be a one-man show. I've got very capable staff, and they do a really good job of supporting me, and I think that having them on board with this is very important. As far as our target sectors, we're looking at food processing. Why is that? Because we have availability of very high-quality water in this community with a pretty negative -- or base level of pH where it doesn't need a lot of distillation to be used. And also, we have good availability of water. And that's not the same thing that a lot of people, especially our western states, face. So I don't want to take advantage of their situation, but if companies are looking to avail themselves with East Coast patient, I want it to be here. We're looking at metalworking because we've got a very strong metalworking background and cluster with several tool and die manufacturers here, which should give us an opportunity and something that we can really expand upon. And then the outdoor products is one that I want to explore, and that's because we have textiles, woodworking, metalworking, everything that's required to assist these people in the future. For the year, we submitted 25 requests for information. Those were projects for which we had a site or a building that we thought fit. We actually worked 18 of these projects, and we had nine projects that were announced. Here is a -- the next slide will show you the list of those. Now, I will make a point here. That third category there is jobs created. Those were not announced. We have verified that these jobs have been created up to this point. There's a big difference in announcement and creation, so they have actually exceeded the amount of jobs that were announced. The total of those top five comes to 422. I did not include the bottom two because they have not officially been announced yet. And then on Terramar, there are jobs that will be included in those. I just don't have actual numbers yet. That's the one that I think I've mentioned. They have consolidated three locations into one site in Burke County. So that's 422 jobs and $27 million of new taxable investment for Burke County. So I just wanted to give you that update to let you know that I'll be presenting this to our board in July, and we will be looking at these results and further planning, looking at our plan of work for the 1617 fiscal year.
Good, thank you, Alan. Is there any questions or comments to Alan from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, just one, if I might. Alan, they said the unemployment was 4.83. 3% of that unemployment can't be higher for usually health issues, so you're down to less than two. How's your approach now to get, since we don't -- you know, we used to say we had all those employees, now we don't have them. How are we approaching to get it? How are we changing that? How's that?
Well, there is question. The unemployment rate is not an exact science. I believe that there are a number of people in that that are not captured in that number. I also know that we have over 7,000 people every day that leave Burke County to work in other counties. So even though our unemployment rate is stated as very low, there are people who are looking for work. There were 196 that showed up at a job fair today. So there are still workers who are underemployed and that are not captured in the system, and a great deal of, I think 7,000 is about a third of our workforce. No, it's not that much, about 20% of our workforce. So there are still people in the community that could take other jobs as the opportunities present themselves.
Okay, good.
Other comments, questions? No? Thank you, Alan. Appreciate it. And I would be happy to accept a motion to accept this report.
So moved.
Thank you, Maynard. You've all heard the motion by Maynard. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Pose like sign. That passes five to zero. We had another presentation scheduled, the SAVI group, and they couldn't get transportation or something here tonight for -- they were going to use the Table Rock Middle School students, and somehow they -- transportation didn't work out, so they won't be here tonight. So that'll take us down to item seven, our scheduled public hearings. And the first public -- or the only public hearing is the adoption of the 217 budget and public hearing, and this is something we've been, as commissioners and the staff, we've been working on for quite a few months. And with that, I'll turn it over to our county manager, Brian Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, as you're well aware, the budget is a statement of policy from the board towards the needs of the community. And the proposed budget, it funds at the current tax rate, we would be using some fund balance, but that's to pay for one-time expenditures such as the new library senior center in Hildebrand, the closure of a landfill sale in accordance with state law. Also provides funds for a water system study that we must have in order to apply for future grants to get water lines put in the ground. The proposed budget also provides additional funding for the school system and community college. It enables enhancement of security at the courthouse. It addresses pay issue to make us more competitive in the recruiting of detention officers and provides for part-time help to enable detention staff to take holiday time off that they've accumulated during the year. Budget also makes a 3.5% adjustment to our pay plan, and as I understand, there hasn't been a significant adjustment to the pay plan since 2008. This budget also continues with our efforts to update and maintain our emergency vehicle fleet for use by our EMS and sheriff's staff. It also enables the construction of new office space for DSS staff that spend most of their time at the courthouse, and it enables the hiring of additional DSS staff to meet the needs of our county in compliance with state and federal laws. And if you've been watching closely, DSS is just taking on more and more children that are being abandoned and are becoming wards of DSS, as well as some adults. So, Mr. Chairman, that has -- concludes my comments. If there's any more the board would like to know.
And I just want to add one thing to that, Brian. Just so the public knows, the EMS center next to the senior center going out of town, we built that out of fund balance, so there's no debt on that facility. And when we build a senior center in Hildebrand, there will be no debt on that facility. We've been able to maintain our fund balance, but yet build those with -- actually paying cash for those, so that's a big thing, I think, as part of that. Commissioners, do you have any questions before we open the public hearing to Brian?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. The 3.5 cost of living for the employees is troubling to me. When we look at the 3.5, it's a very small number, but when you apply that to the actual salary of the employees, it really sounds a lot on. For instance, the people that we're most concerned with, most likely, is people like 25,000, people 25,000 salary. They would get $875 for that cost of living, and they're the ones that probably need it the most. And if you go up the ladder, the highest salary, you look at that, that position will have a $5,5,600 increase there. And of course, the ladder going down, it's, you know, if you go down to each pay grade or whatever, it works out the same way because... And I don't think there's anything fair about this. We're still ignoring those people on the bottom rung, and I don't know what we can do about it, but something needs to be done because those people are the ones that are hurting, anywhere from 25,000 to 35,000. And I don't know what we can do, but I think we should need to focus on those people.
And Jack, I think one of our discussions, the way we've been doing the raises, it's sort of been across the board, and I think in the future, we're looking more at a plan maybe at Catawba County does, where maybe we take out two departments the first year and look at their salaries and try to make some adjustments there, and then the next year, take out a couple more departments or whatever, so it doesn't hit you all at one time. And that way, maybe we can get our employees up to a level where we are comfortable with.
I realize that, but we've been talking about it for months, but I don't know what actually has been taken on it.
And I think we were going to sort of wait till we get through the budget and then get into that pretty -- try, as one of our focus things this year, try to get into that. I don't know if Brian has any comments on that.
I agree, sir.
Any other comments from Brian or...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make some comments. I look at our board, and, you know, the board has not tweaked this budget, not one penny. And we are sitting here with a six, what is it, a six-point-something increase in the budget, and that's about a half more than we had when we did the tax and the reevaluation, which was about 5.5. And I say that because of -- I talked to Paul today. I want to make sure my numbers were right. I looked at that budget last night, this morning, got interrupted all day, so I was about to be late to get here, but anyhow. We had to climb 2.1 million before we got to go over, in words, we made up 2.1 that we no longer have, that went away. So you're really looking at a two, at a true about $7 million increase in this year's budget of new items. And it's a... The other thing is that on your pay raises, those are just half years. Next year, that fee will double because you're just picking up January 1 instead of picking up the full year. And I was, I was working hard, I think all of you are aware, that when we did that tax increase, tax rate increased to 68 cents. We promised the citizens, if the tax got back up there and we found, you know, that things got back halfway decent, that we'd return some of that tax. And this year, it did. And I feel obligated to myself, I feel obligated to the citizens, that we need to live up to that commitment that we return some of that. And this is a worksheet I began to work on, and as I said, I didn't get through with it, but... And it deals with tweaking the budget and how easily it is for us to find $1.2 million and make that tax rate 66 cents. Now, those items I've listed don't have to be absolute, obviously, but I would like to see this board. I'd even be happy to make the motion that we give this as a guide. It's legitimate, there's nothing wrong with those numbers, and we find $1.2 million and we return that two cents, two cents of that tax rate back to the citizens. Next year, the... We're already setting the stage, the way we're voting in this budget, that you're going to have about, from my thoughts and studying the budget. You've got at least about a million and a half that will be increased next year. And I don't know, if you look at 7 million divided by 630, what's that tax rate to get to that, Paul? 7 million at 630,01 cents, how many cents does it take to get to 7 million? About 10 or 11?
11.
That's what we just raised it to. That's what we spent in this budget over last year, 11 cents. And we just can't keep doing that. And I, you know, I have, I have used some questions that had the answers in the information, but I did it mainly, didn't need Brian or Paul to answer those questions, but I did it mainly to draw to your attention that some of these figures are going up 34%. Some of them have gone up 34% for three years in a row.
Well, one thing...
And I think it's important that this board, look at this stuff, I, you know, I don't want to say we're rubber-stamping something, but we sure have not had enough, I don't think, of feedback to our staff.
One thing too, Maynard, that the $800,000 to $1 million on the landfill closure, we -- that's something that popped up, we had no control of. And then building the EMS center last year or the year before, and then doing it with cash, I mean, that all, you know, I think that's got to figure in there, too. I think, you know, building those facilities with cash is still not really hurting our fund balance that bad. And I agree with you, I mean, there's a point where, you know, I think, you know, we talked about, I don't want to get into the jail project, but we just thought that 20-some million dollars is going to put a big burden, and that's why I backed off it, because that, I think, could put a big burden on the taxpayers in the future, but, you know, we rescinded that and whatever. Of course, a new commission could activate that again, but there's some monies, like I say, that Brian really didn't have any control over, like that landfill. And we can, we can deal with the state on that, but I think our time is up with the state. I mean, they're going to either come in and fine us or whatever. We've been playing around with that a couple of years here, and in all good faith, we have to close that landfill, which is, we hope, around 800 and some thousand, it could be a little more, but...
Well, you know, if you recall, we used to do that ourselves, and we sold the bulldozers and the equipment that we did it with before $800,000, you know, you can buy a couple, three, four bulldozers that's big as they make.
Any other comments or questions on the budget?
I'd just like to point out, Mr. Chairman, we do a budget like this, it's $81 million or so, and every year, the new budget for '17, '18 will probably start out at $81 million. And so I don't know how you support we'll be able to pay for a budget that much, add on to it in '17, '18 without a tax increase. I don't see where you're going to get the funds. So it's something to think about between now and then, but we're spending too much money for what, and I don't see benefits other than the two things you mentioned. I can point out and say, well, this is what we did with that money.
Well, you also have to remember, our county buildings were... Well, you also have to remember, our county buildings were, after the slump in the economy, our county buildings were really in bad shape. And in the last two years, we brought every building, just, I think that we have, we brought that up to standards that citizens expect out of those buildings, which I don't know how much money we spent between Chillers and, what was the courthouse remodel, how much?
That was over a million for the courthouse.
So you got to, you got to look at those things. Our facilities are, where they were in very poor shape, courtrooms and whatever, our buildings are in pretty pristine shape right now, so.
Yeah, we're talking about 13, over $13 million over the last six years. And that's really unheard of in Burke County. I can't find any time in this, in the past history, that that even come close to a budget. So I don't know, it's just frustrating, let's put it that way.
Other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just comment, I do think we've tweaked on the budget. We've worked on this budget since February. Manager can probably remember this number off his head better than I can, but there was some $4 or $5 million, I believe, additional request in this budget that we could not fund, didn't, didn't feel that we could fund. I think this budget meets the needs of our county, we're in good financial condition. It sets us on course to continue to be progressive in the things that we're doing and not put ourselves back in the hole that we were in several years ago.
And we say that, and we look at retirees, people on Social Security and things like that. What kind of raises do you think they have received over the last eight years? I remember one we got, that included state, military, and Social Security. People just not getting raised, increasing any of those. And I don't know how it affects these people out in the county. Some people are what we call land poor, they got assets, but they don't have any income coming in, other than Social Security. They live on that, I don't know, but they can make it, I guess.
Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, Jeff, I appreciate your comment, but they know how to work the system. They ask for twice for what they need to get half of it, and you get a $5 million increase in the budget. So, you know, that's not a true assessment of needs. The things that we urgently need, I don't have any problem funding. But there's a difference between want, I'd like to have, and a need. And we're to the point that we are doing a lot of want to's, not urgent needs.
Other comments? If not, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. If anybody from the audience wishes to speak to the budget, please come forward, state your name, and give your presentation, we'll allow you three minutes. Nobody wants to speak on the budget? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the fiscal year 16, 17 budget ordinance, number 2016-03 for the general fund, school half cent capital outlay fund, the school one cent capital outlay fund, the emergency telephone system fund, the fire districts fund, the water sewer fund, solid waste disposal fund, and the solid waste collection fund as presented.
All right, and?
You also want to approve a memorandum of agreement between Burke County and the Burke County Board of Education for fiscal year 16, 17.
You've heard the motion from Jeff. All those in favor of the passing the budget, please raise your right hand. Oppose like sign, that passes 3 to 2. All right, that takes us down to item eight, informal public comments. Again, please state your name and come forward, and Kaye will call you as she's got the little cards in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have five speakers. I would call Ms. Jane Woodward. Good evening, gentlemen, good evening. Firefighters are dedicated, selfless individuals who give up their personal time to serve their community, protect others' property and valuables for no pay. They truly exemplify the definition of a volunteer. That doesn't even begin to include the 46 hours of yearly training, meetings, fire school, EMT training, even maintaining over 80 fire hydrants in our area, and many other duties. This ongoing dispute over the joint service area continues to cause unnecessary stress and frustration. Long-term planning for the department is on hold, but our obligations to the community to provide fire protection remain. As long as the Lake James community is being marketed as a tourism area, we will continue to need to update our equipment to meet the challenges of the future in this growing community. It is all about providing the best, most efficient fire protection to the citizens of this community. That means response time is critical to any emergency situation. Due to proximity of East Shores area to Lake James Volunteer Fire Department, obviously, Lake James will arrive first. That's what I want in an emergency, is a quick response. Let's talk about response time. I was informed recently that this information is computerized and easily accessible at the 911 communication center by calling there. So gentlemen, if you have any questions regarding Lake James response times, please check their records. I was unable to obtain this information after several calls. In January of 2016, the state fire marshal's office completed their survey of the department. The insurance rating is now a 4S for the Lake James Community Fire Insurance District, the best rating a volunteer fire department can have. That speaks for itself. I also have copies, if you haven't seen the insurance letter here, if you're interested. It was in the newspaper as well. Lastly, I am a landowner in East Shores and also privileged to serve on the board of directors of the Lake James Volunteer Fire Department. What we want to do is to unify our community by returning the joint service district to its original service provider, Lake James, and a 10-year contract. We should not have to wait any longer. We need your support, and we need it now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jane. Next.
Good afternoon, commissioners. First of all, we want to thank you for job well done, passing the budget. Secondly, I would like to take a moment, one of my three minutes, just to say, recognize Reverend Debbie McIntosh. As you know, last Friday, we utilized him to ground. One of our stalwart beginning in our community in 1949. Not only did he help us organize the Lake James Fire Department, which I was one of the original members, in 1968. This ongoing situation that has happened in our community has divided us, and there's some issues out there, if the present time, that I'm sure that you're not aware of, that's we call the undercurrents, that's things happening in our community every day that's beginning to get a little bit more than I think some of you willing to admit. All I'm asking you now is to roll up your sleeves and do the right thing, because it's in your hand. And I'm wearing this long-sleeved shirt today, as hot as it is, as you know, because if you roll up your sleeve, you're going to cool off a little bit, right? And I say it's time for us to go to work. All I'm asking you, commissioner, to do is roll up your sleeve and do the job, take care of our community. You have 19 fire departments in this county, and at the present time, Lake James is the only one that's been scrutinized. And that we've been, for the last 20 years, we paid our dues. You know, slavery wasn't this bad. They say, I wasn't there. Someone said, go back to Africa, I wasn't there. I was born right there in Burke County. I celebrate my 73rd birthday last Thursday, proud to be a part of Burke County. Paid my taxes every year, I've been old enough to pay taxes. My forefathers paid taxes in this county ever since the 1700s. All I ask you then again, is roll up your sleeves, roll up your sleeves. Let's go to work. Let's quit putting this off and putting it off. Raise up to the occasion, it's time, somebody get some guts, get some feelings. Understand, we're human, we're not slaves. We work, we're not begging. I just left Washington DC this morning, last night rather, on another occasion, and I went to the Arlington National Cemetery. I was not in the military. All my brothers and sisters, brothers went, they served X number of years. And as I looked at them unknown tombs, first thing went through my mind, that we at Lake James are them unknown tomb today. We've been persecuted and not receiving our blessing. All I ask you to do, roll up your sleeves and step forward and do the right thing. Treat us as all other 18 fire departments in this county. If you do that one, this mutual aid stuff can be taken care of. May God bless you and have a good night.
Thank you, Bruce.
Hi, my name's Laurie Craig, and I live in East Shores. Last year at this time, we presented you with petition from, of over 80% of East Shores residents' signatures stating that we wanted Lake James Fire Department to have 100% of our tax dollars. You received numerous emails, letters, and phone calls from our neighbors stating the same thing. So here we are again. The facts are, the contract from 20 years ago was not intended to be permanent. It has been renewed and extended over the years, and now needs to be resolved. We are in the opposite situation we were 20 years ago. The town of Glen Alpine only wants our tax dollars. They do not provide us the services that we are paying for. If you read their proposals, they are only interested in how much more money Lake James Fire Department is getting than they are. There is no mention of the services they can provide us. Glen Alpine is in financial troubles, but it should not be up to East Shores to bail them out. We are not in the town of Glen Alpine, we are in Lake James. We are nine miles from Glen Alpine. We have no say where our tax money goes when we pay it to Glen Alpine. Lake James Fire Department is only one mile from us. Their fire department has more volunteers, more first responders, and a better tax rating with, a better rating with the state. According to North Carolina law, we are supposed to be serviced by the closest fire department. With all the development going on at the lake, plus the state park and the county park, Lake James Fire Department needs as much tax dollars as they can get, including ours. It is absolutely ridiculous that Glen Alpine now wants even more of a percentage of our tax dollars. Their 20 years is up, and it's now time for our tax money to go back to Lake James. There is too much conflict of interest with people in certain positions having ties with Glen Alpine, and that this has not been resolved yet. You need to do the right thing, honor our petition, and give our tax dollars to Lake James now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, for, I won't take with just a few minutes, everything's been said, you've heard it time and again. First, I'd like to thank you for all your hard work on the budget. I know that's a big responsibility, and thank you for working so hard on it. And it's hard to please everybody, but you've just got to do what you can and take it at heart and move on. But thank you for your work on that. I'm living in East Shores, and first, I'd like to recognize some of the folks that hadn't signed up to speak, that took their time to come down here, that live in East Shores. You just raise your hand from East Shores. Thank you all for coming. Like was stated over 20 years ago, we petitioned you, and you honored our petition, and it was all about saving life and property. That part hadn't changed. It's, that's still what it's about, and we've petitioned again, and would like to go back to the, our tax dollars, to go back to the Lake James Fire Department. We thank Glen Alpine, they've done an excellent job, nothing against them, but it's just the time it takes to get to your residents is what's important. Saving lives and property is what it's about, it's not about money. So thank you for your time and consideration, and we ask that you honor our requests.
Thank you.
Well, hello again, commissioners. For the record, my name is Rick Craig, and I'm president of the East Shores Owners Association and spokesman for the North Powerhouse District residents, and I'm here to talk about the Lake James Fire and Rescue, as it was on the agenda for tonight, and I understand it's been, it's not on there now. As you know, one year ago, I presented you with petition from 80% of the residents from East Shores. In that petition, we, the residents of East Shores, asked that you, that we be placed exclusively in the Lake James Fire and Rescue Fire District, and that 100% of our tax money go to the Lake James Fire and Rescue District. As if that petition never existed, you decided to extend the two-year contract and give two departments one year to agree on a mutual contract between them. In that contract, you gave Glen Alpine an increase in the amount of revenue they received. For what? There was no service from them the day I presented the petition, and there has been no service since then. So why the raise? Why give them more money for no services? I understand tonight, you're going to extend that one-year deadline. I truly hope that each of you have taken the time to read the proposal that Glen Alpine has submitted over the last three or so months. Nowhere in their proposal is there any mention of fire protection for East Shores or North Powerhouse. There is only mention of lost revenue they would lose if the contract is not renewed or cash compensation is received from Lake James Fire Department. This cash compensation would again be a burden to the residents of Lake James Community. As I stated to you in an earlier speech, this whole problem arose from one family starting rumors against the fire department. In 2016, I dislike using these words, but yes, it turned into a black and white situation. Since those troubled times, we have worked together as community leaders, fire and rescue volunteers, and community volunteers, and a dedicated fire chief to create a community and fire department that works together as one. I challenge this board to undo the wrong that was placed on the fire department and community by previous board members. I can only imagine the past board members thinking by giving Glen Alpine compensation for nothing, this was a way of punishment to the fire department for their actions. It is time to fix the problem, and I ask you to return East Shores and North Powerhouse back to the way it was before 1993. And that is 100% coverage and 100% tax revenue to the Lake James Fire Department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Have no more cards.
All right, that's the end of our informal public comments, and we thank you for those comments tonight. The next item is our consent agenda, and with that, I'll turn that over to Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have a number of items, I believe it's 15 in all. First, clerk removal of Sarah Sherrill from adult care. Number two, community development resolution in support of application for the 2017 STP-DA call for projects. Number three, community development resolution in support of memorandum of understanding with North Carolina Division of Parks and Recreation. Number four, county manager, fire protection services between Burke County and Lake James Fire and Rescue in town of Glen Alpine. And gentlemen, I know that's a matter of interest, it has been on the consent agenda. I have met with the representatives here a while back, and they have not gotten to the point we had hoped they would. And I, we have another one last opportunity for them to do that, and I will report back to the board for you to take action in August. I believe some of the issue here is the statutory requirements as far as changing any district lines. Both departments have to be agreeable to give and take, it can't be one and the other not. You also have to have same tax rate in both districts, if not, then you have to go through another hurdle that's established by the statutes regarding changing those district lines. So there are a process that has to go through, and we're doing our best to get through that. I hope folks can be patient with us a bit longer. Number five, EMS director, contract renewal. Number six, finance, capital projects ordinance for font of floor projects. Number seven, finance, home and community care block grant, fiscal 2016, 17. Number eight, fire marshal, fire protection contract, South Mountain Fire and Rescue. Number nine, health department, child protection, child fatality teams, FY 15, 16 report. Number 10, JCPC, 2016 removals, reappointments, and appointments to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Number 11, senior services, American Food Services LLC contract for nutrition programs. Number 12, senior services, East Burke Senior Center Advisory Council bylaws. Number 13, tax department, EMS collections report for April 2016. Number 14, tax department, tax collection report for May 2016. And number 15, tax department, release refund report for May 2016. That concludes your consent agenda, sir.
Good, thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian on any of the consent issues?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one note, it's not really, but I would like a little better, it's not in the bylaws of East Burke Senior Center. And I would love to know, are individuals allowed to serve on both boards? And in that East Burke Senior Center, will there be more members on that board from that district versus the entire county of Burke? It appears that ought to be part of the stipulations on that. That's all.
Good, thank you, Brian. I mean, thank you, Maynard. Any other comments or questions? There being none, what is the pleasure of the Commissioners on our consent agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve all 15 items as rendered.
Thank you, Maynard. You've all heard the motion by Maynard. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, that passes 5 to 0. That takes us down to item 10, our items for decision. The first item for decision tonight is the Homer Burns, the water line extension, and I think Chris Holyfield is here to speak on this, and this has been something we've been talking about for a while, and I believe it's a chicken house and...
Good evening, gentlemen, and I don't have any other comments that changed from our last meeting, which was the...
You want to just maybe give a short...
Sure, yeah.
So the audience knows what we're...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Although we're losing our audience awful fast here, we might have to lock the door and keep them in, huh?
You threatened them with a performance from me, that's what's happened.
But just a short update.
Okay, I'll go ahead.
Just a real short, a couple seconds.
Sure, no problem. Request came in around September from Dana Burns at the end of Homer Burns Avenue to run water out to the end of the road for two chicken houses that he owns at the end of that road. Staff did a, an estimate, got the engineer's estimate as well compared to mine. We investigated the options to do that, looked at a payback period, wrote a, an agreement which you're all familiar with, that asked for a minimum contribution to help pay that back to the county for the investment, that Mr. Burns wasn't interested in signing, and then we made it to the last meeting, which there was some discussion about whether or not we were going to continue down this path.
Good, thank you, Chris. Questions for Chris? I mean, we've been over this and over this quite a bit, but any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to make several comments. I had Kay to pull the other item that we discussed about water board last year. For four residents, we looked at a $975,480 project. We're looking at 130, and it was going to pay itself back. There's several things that bothers me about this entire situation. Number one, to require a payback from one individual on a project, and we've never done that before. The other thing is, I discussed this with Dana, he is out of town, and I asked him if he got a telephone call, and he said he never got as much. So I guess, Chris, he didn't even get a 30-second telephone call from you.
I'm sorry, we've been over this at the pre-agenda, and now I'm going to call you...
Chris, did you call him?
Would you allow me to speak, please?
Well, I had the floor, but you may speak.
Finish your comment.
The fact that we have turned a deaf ear and not, and we've asked time and time again, we want to develop a big user policy for Burke County. We've been doing that much before you came on board, Chris. We haven't gotten that done. That in itself would have probably solved this whole entire issue that we're discussing. I tried to get ahold of somebody at Catawba County today. I understand they do have an agricultural policy and a big water user policy, and it looks like it was not, being very difficult to either pattern or copy or see what they have to begin that process. This is not the kind of response that I would expect from our staff. It's very disappointing. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just remind us that we did not ask Mr. Burns for any contribution for this water line. All we had asked for was a minimum billing each month. If he used, was it $500 a month? I can't remember.
$500 a month was the minimum.
All we asked was he use at least $500 worth of water, and if he didn't, he would pay at least that minimum amount. He was never asked to contribute anything to this water line. And so...
Mr. Chairman, may I have a response?
Sure, go ahead.
Jeff, it's not about the mint, it's the fact that we set a precedent to look at a payback that we didn't do before.
Other comments, questions?
Well, that's a problem, doing something we shouldn't do, and then people come and ask for it. So if you do have one, you do it all. Been, always been my motto.
Other comments, questions? All right. What is the pleasure of the board on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I move we rescind the installation of a water line on Homer Burns Avenue, the approval of a contract with Dana Burns, and the appropriation of $130,000 of general fund fund balance.
All right, you've all heard the motion by Jeff. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, that passes 3 to 2. All right, and item two, resolution calling for the General Assembly to fully fund North Carolina Public Schools. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't take a lot of time, other than just to kind of give a brief summary of why we considered this resolution. From time to time, we get things that come through our state legislature that wind up in our lap as county commissioners to pay for, and the school board and schools' education is no different. Many different areas, we find ourselves picking up the balance of, whether it be teachers or special education, all kinds of things. The resolution covers a number of those. I won't read this entire resolution, but it points out where we stand in North Carolina in terms of other states, in terms of pupil funding, and our state's obligation to provide a sound and basic education to all of our school-aged children. With that, I would recommend approval.
All right, any comments or questions for Jeff? Need a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt resolution number 2016-13.
Thank you, Johnny. You've all heard the motion by Johnny. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, that passes 5 to 0. All right, our next item of business is appointments to the Western Piedmont Board of Trustees, the college. And Kay, I'm going to let you go and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Western Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees is a 12-member board. Four members are appointed by the county. Seat number four is occupied by Elsie Childers. Her term ends June 30th, 2016. She did not submit an application for reappointment. At this time, there are three applications on file for this seat, John Mercer, Stephanie Norman, and Kimberly Kling.
Good, thank you, Kay. And we want to really thank Elsie Childers. She's served on that board for years and years, and at one time was the chairman of the National Association of Community College Trustee Boards, and she's done a wonderful job, and we're going to miss her, and she, she's just really a fine lady. But you've heard, we have three nominations, and I'll be glad to open the floor for nominations on the three people that we have.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Kimberly Kling to the Western Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees, seat number four, for a four-year term ending June 30th, 2020.
All right. Any other nominations for the board?
Mr. Chairman, we would, I would just like to comment, we have another one, and it's a good one, but I understand he's being nominated by somebody else, and I agree with Johnny. Kim will make a good one.
Any other nominations? There being not, a motion to appoint Kimberly Kling to the Western Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees, seat number four, for a four-year term ending June 30th, 2020.
Johnny made the motion.
All right. He made the nomination, but anyways, does somebody want the motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, that passes 4 to 1. Thank you. All right. Item four is general services, solid waste disposal, landfill closure, notice of award. Chris?
So for years, the, many, many years, the county of Burke has operated a MSW landfill, municipal solid waste, at the Johns River facility. That was closed in 98 and converted over, the cap of that was converted over to a C and D landfill, which is construction and demolition debris. That landfill has reached its max and capacity and needs to be closed. In its current condition, the process to close that, recommended from our engineering company, Joyce, is to install a geosynthetic clay liner over the top of the cap, top six acres cap of that landfill, and then backfill with soil on top of that and establish growth. So before you is a notice of award for the contract. Joyce took bids on that, several rounds to get enough bidders, and finally came with two bidders. The low bidder is Triangle Paving and Grading out of Burlington at $838,434. And that has been mentioned several times tonight in this, in this meeting, and that is before you for the, for approval.
And I'll just say before we open for questions, that was figured in the 217 budget. Any comments or questions for Chris?
Mr. Chairman, the only comment I have, and it is not to Chris, it's to our council. I spent about hour and a half, you realize that was a 220-page contract, and I spent hour and a half reviewing that. So council, I'm glad you're here. You have reviewed it, it is all as well?
I have reviewed it, and it is a standard contract for something this night.
Oh, I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right, what is the pleasure on that item?
Mr. Chairman, I move to award the contract for GCL installation to Triangle Grading and Paving Incorporated, and to authorize the county manager to execute the contract subject to approval of funding appropriation in the fiscal year 17 budget.
Thank you, Johnny, for that motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, that... Jack, where was your item for it?
That five is real.
Thank you. All right, item five, floating holiday policy revision. Rhonda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. On May the 31st, the Board of Commissioners discussed a request from the sheriff's office to pay out floating holiday leave balances for detention officers. And the sheriff's request was based on the inability to fill vacant positions and to keep the minimum number of three detention officers on shift. This caused a problem for the sheriff to be able to allow vacations for these detention officers, and so the sheriff had asked for the Commissioners to possibly consider paying out any additional floating holiday balances to the detention officers only. When that came to our attention in HR, we realized that there are more people affected by this policy, there's more departments affected by it as well. That would be general services, the communications group, and the patrol at the sheriff's office. And what HR is recommending is that the Commissioners consider an amendment to our policy on floating holiday to allow a maximum of 24 hours to be carried over into the next fiscal year. And during the May 31st meeting, Vice Chairman Britton recommended that the Commissioners should consider a one-time payout for floating holiday leave in excess of 24 hours. The policy amendment is before you. If you want me to read it, I'll be glad to read that, or take any questions at this time.
I think you've, we've already went over that, and, but the basic, it comes down to $3,500, and it's already been provided in the 215-16 budget, right?
Yeah, the $3,500 is an estimate of payout, and some of our folks have taken their holiday already since I've printed, I've prevented, I can't talk, presented this before, so it may be lower than that, than the $3,500.
Other comments and questions to Rhonda?
I think I asked all mine at pre-agenda.
Anybody else? What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to accept the recommended changes to the Burke County personnel policy as proposed, approve the payout of accumulated holiday leave balance beyond 24 hours, which is a one-time thing of $3,500.
Good, thank you, Maynard, for that motion. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, that passes 5 to 0. Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
All right, our last item, item six, is on the new senior center library project. Brian, and I think you have Chuck Moss here to help you with that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have Chuck here with our construction manager at Risk Company, Hickory Construction, to discuss this with you as to where we are and where we would like to go if the board is in agreement.
Okay, thank you guys for having me here. I'm Chuck Moss, I'm vice president of Hickory Construction Company and in charge of reconstruction services for our firm. This has been a process that started back in January with our initial, initial budget analysis based on the schematic drawings, and, you know, went out and got subcontractor input at that point, and we came up with a budget amount of $3,387,000 roughly. We knew right then, way before we finished the plans, that we had some budget issues. So we got to work right away and came up with some suggestions of ways to save money from the current drawings or what we were planning to do, and came up with some ideas to cut money out of the project. It was about $344,000 to cut out of the project. So we thought that, in discussions with architects, by the way, Greg Milton's here with the architectural firm, Holland and Hammerick, if you have any questions for him. But we decided that instead of redesigning the plans and cutting a lot out, that we would make alternates to cover those items that we were talking about taking out of the project. And hopefully with that, we would be within the budget that we thought we should be or what we were told we need to be at. So that's what we did. We put it out for bids. We had pretty good subcontractor participation based on the economy and the way things are going now. Most contractors are really busy, especially the subcontractors, because they have all pared down during the recession, and they haven't built back up yet, but they all have a lot of work, so. It was difficult getting a lot of subcontractors to bid, but I felt like we did a good job with that. We had, I think, 77 actual bids turned in, competitive bids on the subcontractor end of it. When that was said and done at the end, on the final day when we did our bids, we were still over budget. The grading portion of the contract was way more than we were anticipating, and then also the electrical portions of it. So here we go back to work again. And another thing that happened was our low, our low grading contractor dropped out, he had a mistake. If he would have stayed on, we would have been fine. So we're in the process of rebidding the site package only right now, and that's to bid next Thursday. But with all this, I came up with a large list of deducts to take out of the project to get us down to where we need to be, and we have submitted a contract, a preliminary contract, that shows that we will be not to exceed the $3 million amount. And I'm still, we're taking that risk that that grading's going to come in, and we're going to be under there, but the $3 million is the max.
How much more was the grading?
How much more was the grading? It was 200, over $200,000 more than what we were anticipating. The $200,000 difference between the first grader and the second grader. He claimed that he left out all the storm drainage and all of the utility part of it, so. And he withdrew within the required 72 hours, so there really wasn't anything we could do about that. Even if we had a bid bond on it, it wouldn't have mattered. Even if we had a bid bond on it, it wouldn't have mattered.
Comments for either Chuck or for Brian?
Mr. Chairman, I have one. Back in '13, I guess we passed a resolution saying we're going to set aside funds for that. As I recall, with something like $900,000 was set aside over a couple of years. And I believe, I recall, we spent $500 and some for the property. So is there any of that money left in that fund?
There's some, but I'm not sure that I'd need Paul to tell you what, because we've had expenditures out for different things in order to get us to this point. But, and the way the budget is working, there'll be money that's left in the fund, plus the new revenue that we're looking at from the expanded sales tax to make the payment here.
I'd like to know the number, how much was left, and what for $400,000, $350,000 was spent for, if ever spent.
You get them that, or, I mean, it's Paul. I don't know where Paul got to.
That's okay, you can email me.
All right.
Call me.
We'll get that information, Brian will get that information from Paul out to you, Jack.
All right.
Any other comments? There being none, what is the pleasure of the commission on item six?
Mr. Chairman, we've been waiting a long time for this. I'll make the motion to approve the GPM, guaranteed maximum price, $3 million for construction of the senior citizen library in Hiller Brand, as submitted by the Hickory Construction Company, subject to approval for the year 1617 budget. Further authorize the county manager to execute a notice to proceed and related construction contract on behalf of this board.
And you're right, Maynard, it's been a long time. How many years you and I have been dealing with this?
Been over nine.
It's been a long time. But I thank you all for getting this together and build this with, you know, for cash. This is, I think, a good step. And I know those people will be thrilled down there, they're going to be thrilled to death, so. What is the pleasure of the commission on, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign. That passes five to zero.
Mr. Chairman, an afterthought, maybe we can, when the year's over, we know how much we have overdue on the bank, maybe we can designate that to this, and it'd take less out of general fund then.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. That ends our formal meeting. Reports and comments, any comments starting with JR down there?
No comments tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I submitted my reports from my committee reports.
That's coming up.
To you.
Good, thank you.
And as far as comments, I may jump in front of somebody, but I do want us to remember Deputy Sheriff Daniel Cobb, who was injured in an accident, and there is going to be, Daniel's got six children, and he's going to be out of work probably six months, weeks?
Six months.
Six months. And they're going to do a fundraiser at Chick-fil-A next Friday. I'd like to encourage the public, if you would, please go by Chick-fil-A and spend a little money over there to help Daniel's family out. This is just evidence again of the, these guys do a great job, and we never know what's going to come up and jump out in front of them and cause accidents the way this does. And I know Daniel and his family and his dad, good people. So I just hope we can remember him and his family in our prayers and do what we can to help them out.
Good, anything else, Johnny? Maynard?
I'd just like, I don't believe we'll meet again before July 4th. Happy, 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 safe July.
Good, thank you, Maynard. Same to you. Brian?
Pre-agenda will be in Glen Alpine for July.
Right, I have no comments. None, sir. Jack?
I understand we're having an event Saturday for the veterans in Old Courthouse Square. I think it lasts from 10 to 2, if people are interested in going, meeting some of them. That's all.
Good, thank you, Jack. Kay?
I would just like to express appreciation to Ms. April Buchanan, our scout leader tonight. She's been very instrumental in helping me find troops for our upcoming meetings, and I just wanted to say thanks.
Good, thank you. And committee reports, Johnny, you've already submitted yours, anything special?
I've submitted from the library and something else. I can tell you the library is tickled to death at the route we're taking. I did receive a notice today that I will be attending the State Water Infrastructure Board meeting on July 20 in Raleigh. There are some new grants that have been offered through the state program called the Asset Inventory Assessment Grants, plus merger regionalization and feasibility grants. This is the first time that's ever come up to this board, and there were 196 applications turned in, just overwhelmed. Our board has, committee has around $127.4 million to give away. We received requests for $207 million, so I don't know how that money will be divided up. We've got a long litany of things to look at to divvy this money up, so I hope we can get it out where it needs to go. If I may, the one thing I was, that took me back when I was reading today, is all of the facilities that have water systems from the 1970s and the 1960s, and they don't even know where the pipes are. And Joe died, and they're trying to find out if somebody remembered what Joe said, where a pipe was. It was very interesting to me, and I just couldn't believe what I was reading about all these old facilities. So these people really need this money to try to get this water to the places it needs to go. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Johnny. Maynard?
Mr. Chairman, I think you received this information by email, but we approved the budget ordinance for mental health for eight counties. Take a guess what the budget is for Medicaid. $327 million, that's within M. Parks and Recreation did not meet because did not have a quorum. They were scheduled to meet this Thursday. And Clean Air and Water is the annual convention, and I believe, Kay told me, that was August 5.
No information, sir.
We had, as you could see tonight, we had from BDI, the report that Alan gave, which is great, and we thank Alan for being here. He's 15 months, and we really appreciate the good job he's doing. Airport, good things are happening out there, and other boards, I wait for a meeting this month. Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I did meet with EMS Quality Management Committee and the DSS boards in the past month, and have submitted that information.
Okay.
Travel and Tourism going to have a meeting. JCPT didn't have a meeting, and I got one in Hickory Transportation tomorrow.
Good, thank you, Jack.
A good June.
All right, Kay, vacancy announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have the following opportunities for citizens to serve on county boards or committees. The Hickory Regional Planning Commission, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, City of Morganton Board of Adjustment for the ETJ, City of Morganton Planning Board for the ETJ.
Anything else?
Voluntary Agriculture Board, Burke County Board of Adjustment, Child Protection and Child Fatality Prevention Team, Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Western Piedmont Regional Transit Authority Transportation Advisory Board.
Good, thank you, Kay. And this is a good way to get involved in county government, so we encourage everybody that's listening to this program or in the audience to, please get involved, we can really use you. There is a closed session tonight to discuss threatened or pending legislation, to preserve the attorney-client privilege, to discuss economic development matters, and to discuss personnel matters if needed. A motion to go into closed session after a five-minute break.
A move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We're going to a five-minute break. I pass this five to zero. Kay, Paul?
Out of closed session. One matter to come before this board. The county has had a request from Ecrines on a building that we own, and they leased from the county. They have made a request to extend the lease, and we need to authorize our county manager to negotiate that lease extension with Ecrines.
And execute.
And execute that lease agreement. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
A move, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, vote say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And Commissioner Abely is not present in this session, but that he was given excuse. Your motion to adjourn?
A moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.